It is one o'clock. We will begin, I'll call the Board of Supervisors into session this afternoon's budget work sessions. We will start with the county recorder, John Murphy. Welcome, John.
Hello, thank you. Thanks for having me up here. Not a whole lot of changes from what we may have seen last year. On the next slide, we have something that's kind of unique to Dubuque County versus a lot of other places around the state is that we are one of about 10 counties that are self-sustaining, which means we generate enough revenue from the fees that are charged for real estate and for DNR and for vital records that we actually generate enough income to pay for all of our, all of our salaries, everything associated with our office, and then we actually are able to give you guys additional money so that you don't have to take it out on the taxpayers. So since I've been here, it's been $708,786 have been returned to, to the general fund. So that's money that has not had to go to taxpayers. So that's a number I'll hopefully update every year and keep getting bigger and bigger as long as I'm here.
That's great. Thank you.
Yep. Very generically, there's three offices that we work with at the state level, and it's all legislated under chapter 331. We work with the Department of Public Health, that's with vital records, the Department of Natural Resources, and that's for both snowmobiles and ATVs, and the Department of Revenue as well. This chart here shows our expenses since I've come into office. Again, when you average that out over the years I've been here, it's about a 2.63% annual increase is what that's, that's been since I've gotten here. With some ups and downs, and looks like we'll be able to bring it down just a little bit here next year. The revenue side, that's a higher number, 6.59% has been the average increase. I'll show you a few things to explain why there's a lot more revenue coming in, but that's went up significantly the last two years. Had actually changed the charts. I think I added up to 750,000 and we got more revenue than that this past year. So I had to make that chart a little bit larger, which was great. This here is the, the cost for the supplemental. That's been an 8.24% annual increase has been what that's averaged out over the years. Part of that, kind of two parts, A, obviously insurance costs going up. You know, this one is one that's generally not real responsive to, to the department. Just more the, the cost of doing business and a lot of decisions that are made up here in regards to insurance. The other jump has been due to a retirement that we're now paying out on their retirement. There's a few beautiful homes and some have better landscape than others. That goes back to a previous conversation that occurred briefly, but this shows the number of real estate documents that we filed since I've been here. We do those on the calendar year, not on the fiscal year. And when you look at those, that number, you can see that's made a huge jump in 2020 and increased a little bit more even in 2021. That is always been probably about two thirds of the work that's being done in our office is the real estate itself. So, you know, if you come down personally for vital records or for, or for the DNR renewals or buying a new boat, one of those things, that really is, is a small part of what we do. These transactions are typically occurring between lenders and abstract companies and lawyers and a lot of business transactions, not individuals coming into the office. The number on the, on the right-hand side, that's as of 1/20 of every year, just trying to give a, an idea of where we're at this early in the year. And this is obviously a couple of weeks old now, but it has shown, yeah, the last two years, we've seen a, an early start in January as well. It looks like we're, we're on a, another trend to be somewhere that, you know, maybe somewhere between 19 and 22.5 for the number of documents that we'd anticipate recording this year.
John. Those documents, that would be all like the deeds to the properties?
Deeds, mortgages, and with those.
Refinancing.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, that's a big piece of what we were doing the last couple of years, just the number of refis. I mean, some folks might've had the, you know, two, three, four refis over that timeframe just because how low the rates were. And, and the way that we charge, and this is all under state code, so it's not personal discretion on how we charge for those $7 for page one, $5 for every additional document. So the number of documents and the amount of revenue we, we bring in are not always directly correlated because if you're doing a lot of, you know, releasing mortgages as a one-page papers, if you're doing a deed, you know, it might have, you know, 15 pages to it. So those numbers are not always one in the same.
Okay, thank you.
With the DNR, so this is specific to snowmobiles and ATVs. You can kind of look from 2017, we did 2,363 renewals. It has went up every year, and when COVID hit, we noticed a pretty significant increase as well. That, you know, that's, there's been shortages across town where you can't buy ATVs, you can't buy boats, you can't buy a lot of toys because they were, you know, they're being sold off the shelves as fast as they're, they're available or off the lots. And, and as of January 20th, we had about 2,500 of those renewed that are due on the, the calendar year. But that's, that, you know, like there's a stat later in there, it's a 40% increase over the last three years in the number of vehicles that we've renewed through the DNR. This graph, so the dark line is the number of certified marriages. That is separate from the marriage applications. Marriage applications, that's people applying to be married. You can look over that, that trend line over the last 10 years or so. The, the darker line, and the reason why that number is going up and the other isn't, is a big piece of that has to do with the, the gold star and your driver's license. So when you go and get that gold star, they're going to probably require that you have a birth certificate to come in, and that's, I think, the next one. But a lot of, anybody that changed their name when they got married would also then need to bring in a marriage certificate. So that's why that number spiked over the last couple of years. And I anticipate that to be going down until we kind of get more into that sense of normalcy, wherever that's at, maybe five, six hundred of those a year versus, you know, well over a thousand. And this is kind of that similar trend line, just a little further ahead, the number of certified births for the same purpose. A lot of it has to do with the folks getting their, their driver's license renewed. We worked pretty, pretty closely with the DOT and trying to, to work their appointment schedule and the appointment schedule that we used to keep. We do not require appointments anymore. And we had a, a philosophy that if somebody was there same day with the DOT, we would always honor those appointments that they have out there because we understand it could be a challenge to get an appointment out there. It took three or four weeks. And we didn't want to delay that process any longer. So, but you can see that big spike and that's come down. It's probably more in the normal range, and that's probably where we'd anticipated for the foreseeable future. And that's our total graph for the number of total certified copies. So that's birth, death, and marriages. Again, deaths are, for the most part, transactions with funeral homes that, that they buy them directly from us and then provide them for the, for the families. But that shows you again, how, how busy it's been over the last few years. So for some of our accomplishments this past year, we were split up into two different locations for right about around a year. We had half the people working in the, in the courthouse here, and then we had half the people working in the old jail. And then we came back together once we, once it fully opened back up to the public, so that kind of used that time and the second bullet point about doing our renovation that we did in the office, and that had four components in my mind, but we were able to do that before we fully opened to the public. So if we were, had our office set up, the old jail made it make a lot of sense to, to get that project done when we have that other office set up and it wouldn't interrupt the public anymore than, than COVID already had. But the four pieces to that and the four components to the renovation, number one was for privacy. You don't think about it a whole lot, but only certain people are entitled to certified records. And if somebody comes in and says that they want their son's birth certificate and their name's not listed, they don't get it. We have to explain to them that, you know, either your name or a different name is listed as, for paternity. So that's a conversation that occurs more often than you, you'd think. So privacy was a big issue for me, the way we set up, that kind of, anytime those conversations came up, looked like everybody kind of turned like, wow, that's more interesting than what I'm waiting for. So they would sit there and engage in that conversation. Number two is the security. We, almost all of our records that we have are public information. So you have a right to go into the vault, look through just about everything, everything minus our military records and some of the DNR records. Everything else is public information. So we have kind of a different office than, than much of the rest of the building that public comes and goes as they wish. The way it was set up previously, the public was walking right by where we had our cash register at all times. I was never a real big fan of that. We now have that set aside, so it's not anywhere near where the public would be unless they are specifically brought back by, by a staff member. Productivity. With our old location, we had, over half our staff would have to go up to the front desk, and then they'd fill out the paperwork, go back to their computer, complete it, and it was a lot of walking back and forth to complete transactions. Now we have customers coming directly up to, you know, to the, to their cubicle. So it's a little less running for staff. And the, the fourth piece is ADA compliance. The public terminals that we had, we're in that little, you know, it's now become a little bit of a break room and a storage room for us. We now have two public terminals, one of which is in the vault that would not be ADA compliant, and that's the one that we generally encourage, you know, our daily runners to utilize. And then the other terminal is sitting behind a couple of staff people. We don't necessarily advertise that as a public terminal, but it's there for anybody that would, that would need it to meet those ADA requirements. And that project was done on time and on budget. One second piece that I'm going to add, this isn't going to be, I'm not asking for money for this, we're going to, we'll find a way to, to make a couple of very small purchases, but most people don't know what occurs in our office, and that's, you know, hoping to, A, make it a little bit more enjoyable for folks, but B, a little more educational as well. Want to add a little bit of a, a museum type atmosphere where we're going to put some books on display because, right, anytime I take people back there and show them, whether it's a, you know, an old military discharge book that's showing discharges from the Civil War era, people always think that's pretty cool. So we're going to put that in a glass display so folks can see it. As well as, you know, some of our earliest records, our marriages go back to 1839 before we were even a state. We'll put one of them in there. And then we'll also have some other interesting land records that have some very historically important information that we'll put out in there as well. So that's the one last tweak that we'll be doing, and hopefully that way, when folks have five or 10 minutes waiting for us to complete the paperwork, they'll have something to look at and hopefully understand what we do just a little bit better. So I think this is the last one. Our staff are what we're made of. In addition to myself, we have two deputy recorders, three full-time clerks, and we have one temporary part-time clerk. It's a former retired employee who's working on an as-needed basis. This year I was asking for $15,000 for that position. To date, I think we've only used right around $1,000 for this fiscal year. And that's been for a number of reasons, but she was very, very helpful. We were about three and a half weeks behind on our real estate getting it completed. That process takes multiple sets of eyes to make sure that we, everything's indexed properly. So it takes multiple, you know, it's not do it once, do it right. It's, we do it three times, and we're doing it right each of those three times, hopefully as well. But that's a check and balance to make sure that it's 100% accurate when it gets entered into our system. So she was a big asset to come in and help us there to get caught back up. And she probably would be in the office over the last couple of weeks, except there's been some family loss for her during that time. So we hope to get her back before too long. But the last time we did a, a staff study amongst recorder statewide, Dubuque had the smallest staff of anybody in Iowa with a population over 40,000. So it was a pleasant surprise when I saw that. And then, you know, I always want to give a, a shout out to the staff that we have, that they've been amazing. Over these last three years, again, real estate's increased 38%, with that increase on vital records up 27%, and our DNR renewals have increased over 42% over the last three years. So it's been crazy times for us on a day-to-day basis, but had an amazing staff that's, that's made that, made that work. So the, the only piece I think that is, you know, I think something that we addressed once previously is when we brought on that part-time position that was temporary as needed. It was determined then that we'd make sure that we address that in the future, so it's not just automatically reoccurring. Previously, there was a budget for part-time seasonal help in the summer months to help with vacation. That's kind of the way I view this as well as basically when we need her, I call and if it's for her schedule, she's able to come in, which is great for us. And it's worked out well for her too. Just spoke with her this week, and she, she hopes to be accessible over the next couple of weeks because we have had staff transition. Like when the, when a deputy was hired in the treasurer's office, it meant that there's been some shoveling, some shuffling. And so we'll have two people in our office that are new with less than a couple of months' experience. So she'll probably be an asset that we'll have to lean on as well in the coming weeks and months. Any questions for me?
You just said Amy went out, or no, Amy, Lindsay just went out the zoning.
Correct. She will be, yep, at the end of the week. Yeah, yeah. So I think you'll see a personnel requisition next, next Monday's agenda and yeah, hopefully we'll be hiring that position before too long, next couple of weeks. I've learned you don't ask twice if people have questions.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Good. Thanks, John.
Next, we will have GIS mapping. Oh, sorry, go ahead. All right, Don, or still.
Just wondering if there's any interest in any motion on that request at this moment, or would you like to revisit it later?
What is his request?
His request is to include $15,000 in his budget for part-time temporary staffing.
The one person we approved last year.
Yes. So we only approved it for one year last year. So this is just the extension of that he's requesting.
I will make a motion to approve the recorder's budget as presented.
Sorry, do a second. Have a motion, a second to approve the recorder's budget. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll have.
Yes.
I'm sorry, who's it do?
I'm going to. This is auditor Drago. I'll take the GIS presentation. It's one slide of Selican throw our improvement up there. And Jeff is here to answer any more specific questions. But the one request outside of normal operating budget is a personnel request certifying a change of deputy from 65 to 70%. Shall be done, I was told.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the change of the deputy auditor from 65 to 70%. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Easy. Good.
Is that all you had, Governor?
That is. The auditor's office has no capital requests, so we will not be making a presentation this year.
We're a lean, mean, fighting machine.
We will go to our budget director, Stella.
All right. Give me just one second. I'm going to share this screen. So the budget department.
I'm going to have trouble hearing you. So either turn, you need to turn the volume up.
Turn me up. Okay. So the budget department, I'm coming to you today to make a request for a budget analyst. And I have spoken with all of you over the course of the last four years really about the budget department and what our needs are. But let me just tell you a little bit about the budget department. So that consists of me today. And I work under the direction of the Board of Supervisors to develop, monitor, and maintain our budget. So that, since I've been here, has ranged anywhere from 67 to $94 million. I have taken on duties as a risk manager for the county, so that includes property and casualty insurances, unemployment insurances. I work with Dawn on the health insurances and the employee benefit programs. I've taken on the capital project management in the last year with the retirement of the former auditor. And in the last year as well, it's been a focus of a lot of our time is the American Rescue Plan Act. So that project, leading the working group and the reporting of that back to the federal government, and then of course, all kinds of other special projects as the board works on them, I help each of you in, in my capacity. So I work with all of the departments across the county on their budgets, ensure compliance with the state of Iowa and all our budget reporting. I do tax filings on behalf of the county for our benefit plans, and I work with the actuaries on our reportings back to the state on those. Work on the cost allocations, and all of that is new responsibilities essentially since I've been hired, except for the budget piece. So my job has evolved great, greatly over four years with the different things that we've taken on. So it's exciting and a lot of good stuff going on in the county. But there's more things that I want to be doing. So I want to be, you know, providing more consistent and relevant reporting back to the board and the public. I want to be doing more budget consultations within departments, helping them with capital planning, doing more five-year budget planning, or, you know, getting to longer budget planning. Continue to implement best practices as we see them, you know, making changes in those directions. Someday getting to be a budget book, being able to do a budget book on behalf of the county. I'm sure all of you have seen those from other jurisdictions. They're pretty lengthy communication tools that are developed after the budget is completed. I would like to eventually get to the point where we're implementing a, a different budget software that is more user-friendly and provides better reporting and communications to departments and to the board and the public. And of course, we have a big looming project, which is the ARPA reporting. So as we continue these discussions and make final decisions, there'll be a lot of reporting back to the federal government on what we're doing. So all of that being said, what I'm asking for today is to add a full-time budget analyst. So I put a job description that Dawn assisted me with developing about what we would like this person to be doing. So it's really working under the supervision of myself to help do all of those things. Specifically, the capital project and the ARPA reporting, I think, are some of our highest needs today. And then, of course, working with the development of the budgets and, of course, amendments throughout the year. So the salary range was based off of other comparable budget positions locally. So, and we also looked at some internal scales to match it up to some internal items. The second part of my request, actually. So I also put into the packet an updated description of my position based on what I'm actually doing. It didn't change a whole lot, other than the inclusion of some of the new duties that I just described to you. So on that, there's a new salary range as well posted. That was determined based on review of counties five through 10 in Iowa, and it's the average wage currently.
We have a slide on that.
Yes, I can post that up real quick. Yep, me, sorry. So I'm happy to answer any questions, give you any more information.
What has been the nature of the discussion with the auditor's office, who also will be looking, I believe, over the next What has been the nature of the discussion with the auditor's office, who also will be looking, I believe, over the next year for possibly additional staff with the retirement redesign? You know, is there capacity in the auditor's office to be looking at anything like risk management, any of those duties? I just, my question is about what conversation has there been before we hire a new person?
I would say there hasn't really been much conversation about sharing of duties. At this point, I did, when we were reviewing my job description, I did see in there that there was some grant writing items in my job description. I left them in there, although it's not something we have traditionally done, but I've heard interest expressed surrounding it. So I've left it in there. It is not my expertise. However, it's something I'm willing to give a shot at if we have interest in pursuing grants. There's there's many opportunities under the American Rescue Plan, and I think we'll continue to see various opportunities opening up for grant writing. So I've left it in there. I know the auditor is interested in pursuing potentially a position for that nature as well.
Kevin, your thoughts on sharing some duties?
I didn't say share. I said transfer, be responsible for. There's, you know, we're I'm not going to put words in the auditor's mouth about what he might want to do. I was just asking if there was conversation. It seems there wasn't. So when I look at this and I say, we're going to add another person to the supervisors' department, it makes me very nervous. Because if we explored what other functions and duties could be transferred, some of the work you're doing was once done by Denise Dolan, the auditor. So that's the conversation. Is there, has there been conversation about the need between the auditor and the supervisors for this work?
If you're asking me, no, there I haven't had any in-depth conversations to that effect, but I'm not necessarily comfortable weighing in on her proposals. These are her proposals. This is what she's presenting here today. We can certainly sit down and have a conversation. There are certainly things we can do. And there are certain times of year where we have more flexibility and certain times for her than she. But again, this is, she's making a presentation to you, and I don't feel as though I should weigh in.
That's fine. Didn't know if you were where you were at with staffing, if you were, and think there's any way that that would work, or if it's something that, you know, we could discuss, I guess is what it is.
Well, I mean, we're looking at a retirement later this year, potentially, and in that case, staff on the finance side have identified that this is an opportunity for us to reshift and rethink the way that we handle some of our duties over there. And and with that, you know, there is opportunity for us to take on additional. There were a number of duties that were offloaded from the previous auditor when I joined by virtue of new auditor versus 33-year veteran. And there were just, there were some learning curves early on. That's not to say that some of those couldn't come back to the auditor's office at some point. Like I said, we're building in through efficiencies, the ability to adapt and take on additional duties if need be. So that option is always there. I'll never take that off the table. But I will also be the first person to tell you when we're taking on too much and we can't take on anymore, so.
I understand the learning curve, trust me. I know that you are pretty well weighted down with the A R P stuff and everything. I think we probably need a little more discussion on the position at this point with, see what might work, what might not work. At this point, I mean, I would be, I guess, agreeable to the position just because I know what you're doing. Been helping me a lot with all the other stuff, plus what you're trying to get done, so.
Yeah, when I kind of look at the the budgeting component, you know, I look at a couple of things. One, you know, the need for redundancy. We love what you're doing, doing a good job, but it's always good to have in such a critical role, the ability to have redundancy in that position. I would see this doing that. The second thing that we probably need just to get better at as a county is to get information to the citizens. And so we certainly have, you know, our public meetings and we have our standard forms that we create, but we're lacking really any other materials or presentation items to say, here's where your tax dollars go, here's kind of, you know, where that money's spent. And I think this position could could help that. You know, thirdly, American Rescue Funds, you know, we've got to get that right, and that's a whole other soon to be 20 million over the next three or so years that everyone's kind of pointing to you and the auditor's office to figure out and probably unfairly to put all the requirements on you. And then last year, what I've heard the board mention in multiple scenarios, and we had it maybe this morning, is that as changes occur or there's an opportunity in front of us, so for example, in the 911, what is a multi-year scenario of that? And that's a very difficult question to answer if you're in the throes of budget year to year. And so having another person might give us the opportunity to be able to answer those questions from a budget advantage point before we, you know, get too far down the weeds related to operations. So I'm definitely in favor of the position. I think it makes sense.
The position could be paid out of A R P funds for the first two years, or?
I think we could come up with some scenarios. I don't think I intend for it to be solely working on that, but maybe we.
I'm just saying, yeah, it could be funded through that as part of the.
Certainly a percentage, I would think, you know. I don't know if they, they probably a lot of cost allocation, it's like other departments, so if that's allowed, that would be a good idea.
The other factor that weighs for me is Ed Raiber's position. We added a position to the supervisors' office. And I don't know what duplication there is. We certainly have Ed doing things for ARPA. We have lots of I mean, the job description, this is the first time I've seen it since it was published in the packet. So I would like to have there be more discussion about who the person reports to. I mean, I'd like to have a little more reporting from you to me personally. We've never done job reviews. So I mean, I would like to maybe have a little more time to explore this, what it means, rather than just add another person to supervisors or accumulating people under in our department. And I'm not sure that we're making that case to the public that we need this. So I have some hesitancy about that. The document that you and I've discussed for three years about creating greater transparency, you've told me is software about a $65,000 purchase to get what I would like to have to show citizens where we are. That's not in this proposal, and it isn't in the job description.
Any softwares, I would need definitely staffing to help implement them. So I haven't come forward with any of those requests because I would not alone be able to implement them with my time constraints. So I'm very interested in pursuing various budget softwares. It's not part of the request today, although if funding would allow, I would definitely pursue that for next year.
Is this position scheduled roughly start date of July 1?
Yes.
Assuming you find the.
Yeah, assuming. I think, you know, I thought about that over the weekend as I was contemplating this. I had initially proposed July 1. Would the board have interest in moving faster? I would move faster because of ARPA and the reporting requirements coming up. So clearly not today during budget, but as soon as the budget wrapped up, I could begin recruitment efforts. And I just want to point out, this is kind of a draft job description as well. I mean, there's, this isn't any kind of final format that could go out. There could definitely be additions and other information if the board is looking for additional things.
For me to support this, we need to have more conversation. That's where I am.
Need more conversation.
Yeah, I need to be more engaged in what the person's going to do and, you know, I just, and how it fits with Ed Raiber. I mean, I'm, I've only been a supervisor three years, and we're adding people to the supervisor that report to me.
The difference between.
I don't know how much reporting I'm getting, so that's where I am.
So the difference I see between this and what Ed does, I'm looking for more of the actual accountant, financial analyst position. I think he's great with different policy and things like that. He's very helpful and has been a wonderful addition, but this is a different skill set I'm looking for.
This is more of a financial aspect of.
Yes.
I understand that. Do you have anything further here?
Certainly your comment, rather, you know, pulling this forward, I think, assuming you find the right candidate, that alone might take a while with your budget that you're working on now. And then by the time that's kind of done, you're already close to May and
Yeah.
really down to 60 days. So if you feel you really could move faster, I would support that. But otherwise, I think, you know, as things normally go, having a July 1 start for funding, I would be comfortable with. You know, I, you know, I would have some concern if we, as a Board of Supervisors, had a budget analyst and they reported to us. Okay, so because, you know, you're full-time, we're not related to our management and governments. And so, you know, that's, that gives me comfort that they'd have a support team with you and or backup between the auditor and certainly Dawn related to kind of the administrative components.
I think you have consensus. Yes, I would probably work on your job description a little more, get with Kevin and work through whatever issues you think and come back with the job description or.
And maybe just, you know, certainly Dawn probably knows this better than I, but if you hear if we're the key stakeholders, what are the priorities of this person? So you've got, you know, 10 bullet items. I like to maybe prioritize that here's the top tier of the things we're trying to accomplish. And that would come from requests that you've heard from from the Board of Supervisors, I would believe, or or citizens as well. Otherwise, it might be tough for an individual to, you know, all 10 might be of equal weight. And I'm really a software guy as well, so if you feel or felt that a software component would add value to this position and accomplish other objectives that you you've heard from supervisors, I would, I would be in favor of that. A lot of times, if you start somebody from day one and they have a program and say, here's one of your primary duties that the Board of Supervisors is looking for, we're looking for this outcome. That gives them real clear definition from day one. Maybe just, Dawn, who does Ed report to you, Stella or the board?
To you as the board.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Can Dawn, can you, who reports to us? Can you remind us?
Myself, Anthony, Stella.
Nathan? Or no, Nathan.
No, he was coming up through me.
Right.
Yeah, I think this is the only three.
Tammy Henry?
She comes, reports through me.
To who?
To me.
Okay.
For the job.
And Chris Soder?
Me as well.
And Nathan Gilmore?
Me as well.
And so in those active reports, what what is the connection between them reporting to you and then you reporting to us on all those things?
Um, I guess if they, you know, they run their budgets, I look at their budgets with them. I sit down with Chris and look over some things. I know the auditor has in his capacity as the, what's your term, the custodian of the courthouse. I knew there was a a charm at it for, but they work very independently as directors. I think they should.
That was a change the previous board made. I can't remember exactly what year. Because at one point, I think when I got here, we had like eight or 10 people reporting to the Board of Supervisors. And I think we had made a change to have more report through kind of the new hires, new management, yourself and Stella.
Anything else?
Related to your position, maybe Dawn, if you can talk a little bit, I don't know if you've been involved related to the change in you know, salary ranges for the budget director, if you have any comments or support of that.
So I do support that. We did look at, like Stella said, the six through 10 counties, which we do a lot when we look at salary comps. When you start looking at other counties such as Polk or Lynn, even Scott County, they're, they're pretty far off. They're, you know, that we would really have to make major increases. These are more comparatively sized counties. And really, when you're at this level, those who who are we're going to be competing against, we're not necessarily just going to be finding a budget director locally. Sometimes that we'd have to, at this level, you may have to take them from another county to get the specific skill set that we would ask for for a budget director. So I think those are those are very good, accurate comparables for this position.
And then procedurally, do we have any steps or anything like that? Or is it just the entry to end?
No, so each of them right there, it's a range in there as five steps. It includes five steps.
Both the budget director and the analyst?
That is correct.
Five steps?
Yep.
Okay. And we classify these positions as a professional non-bargaining or what's?
Correct.
Non-bargaining. Is that the word, non-bargaining? Okay.
And where are the five steps?
We have, we just have a spreadsheet. There's, we have step one, two, three. I don't put them all out here because it just, we, it's normal to just show the range, but this is a five-step. So it would be, if they started at the minimum, they would get one when they finish their probationary period, which is at six months, and then they would do it annually until they receive, until they get to the top step, and then they would stay there at step five.
What do we currently, what's your current wage? But Stella, what do you currently make?
I believe it is $95,000. I can get the exact. It's 95, 95,940.
Okay, and so if we approved the salary, right, the next set of slides. Is that what you're asking, that your salary increased to this and you'd be put on a step program?
Yes.
And then you'd be on a step, and then you get an annual increase, too?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm, I know of needs inside the auditor's office, inside finance, separate from budget. And so I am, I am happy to revisit this when I see some kind of strategic thought from what the auditor needs to do as well. And these are tasks you took on when the current, the old auditor left, when Denise retired. And I need to know that those, they belong in your department. That's what I need to know. Or should they find a home inside the finance department, inside the auditor's office? So that's, that's where I am. I need to have more robust discussion about what are the county's needs? And how do things fit inside all of the people working in these two offices? I need to see that broader scale. That's what I would want.
I'm generally comfortable at this moment, just, you know, I have probably my closest relationship is between roads and budgets right now. The two biggest ones. Sheriff, if I ever him return my call, I'm just kidding, just kidding. So no, I'm, I'm comfortable with Paul's. I think it makes sense, you know, we, when we, we didn't, you know, we had a previous budget director. And in her absence, Denise did take over budget roles, you know, on a short-term basis. And then prior to that, going 10 years and further, I think Denise did about four different jobs and roles. And so when we did go out to get another budget director, I don't know how long of time we spent trying to figure out the comparables. And so I think we did the best job we could, but we had probably two new supervisors and Dawn, were you here with Stella's hiring or not?
We interviewed for our positions the same day.
Same day, okay. I knew it was close. So you, you know, so we were not the current staffing and same decision. So I think it makes sense. It's a nominal change for where you're at right now year over year.
I'm pretty comfortable with it. We have to get it right. We're not going to draw any more employees if we're going to be way down in pay scale.
Just would ask my colleagues if adding more people to the supervisors' department is going to be a reason for us to need a new building or need more space. We, Ed Raiber works from home. This new person, I'm assuming, will be working from home. I mean, we, that's part of it is where's their workspace?
Well, I'm hoping to have that resolved here and. Well, I'm hoping to have that resolved here in a short amount of time, but. If that doesn't work, then we will have to find a space for them or. They will work from home, whatever works. I'm generally, generally, generally comfortable with. The pay range and.
Going back to the budget analyst position, this is an idea since you said the. Job descriptions in flux, but possibility not to necessarily tie down future boards too much is to, to list this. As, you know, component of the fine funding for American Rescue Funds. And to be revisited when those funds expire, so whether that's twenty twenty four or twenty twenty six. I'd be open to that because, you know, generally speaking, you know, new full time employees. Have a tendency to stay and they have value and worth, but putting that in the actual, you know, decision making, I would be open to if my colleagues thought that was. Worth, worth merit.
That, that would be fair.
I think this will also make the budget director, one of the most highly compensated people in the county. Are we wanting to do that?
Non elected officials, is that what you're referring to? So, you know, they would, you know, certainly be top 10 if you throw in elected officials. Remove some of those related to the sheriff and county attorney. I, I would say, yeah, you know, so, you know, kind of the analogy would be the Anthony Bargette is, I think, the highest compensated. In the entire county. And I think if you look at the amount of decisions that he makes and the budgets and the impact they have. In making sure the dollars go as far as they can and have the most impact. I'm very comfortable with that decision and I kind of relay that as well to some of our other professional staff. And since we're talking about our budget director, I would. See her in the same light.
Definitely she, she's going to make sure everything's filed with the state on time and everything balances out. Definitely have no issue with the, the pay range.
How would you like to proceed Chair? Do you want to revisit this? I've heard some revisiting. I've heard also support. What do you feel we're at?
I think we would probably want to revisit budget analyst. I think if we can get that. Your job description cleaned up just a little bit. And then add, I think. I like Jay's recommendation that. Like through twenty twenty six, the ARP fund thing, and then it'd be revisited to see if the employee would. Continue on or if that position would be eliminated at that time. But I'm guessing as things keep evolving and. You're only one person and you can only do so much. You do need a helping hand. There's no doubt.
So can I, Chair, are you saying that this is a temporary position or this is a permanent hire?
Well, Jay had mentioned to put it, putting it into the. Description that it would be basically for the ARP through twenty twenty six and it would be reevaluated at that time.
But we need to, but to hire somebody, you need to tell them whether or not it's temporary or permanent, right?
That's why you would put it into the description right away that they knew it was going to be.
Yeah, we, we modeled some of this off of, I believe Scott County had hired a strategic initiatives budget analyst was their title. Specifically to do ARPA items. So that's where we modeled quite a bit of this job description. I will say that I, I truly do believe that this position is needed. There is a lot of work to be done with ARPA and then the other things that I, you know, the vision that I have for the budget and where I would like to take it.
The budget book would take substantial amount of time. That's a.
Yep.
Might be great. If you. Could bring it back to us with that cleaned up a little bit.
I will work on that.
Consensus. Did you have anything else to add in or? Jay?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. And do you want to take any action on the second part of the request? For the salary range or do you want that to come back as well?
I have no issue with it.
Nor do I.
Pardon me?
Do a move with on the salary range for the budget director? Do we want to take action on that?
Looking for a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the budget director's proposed salary range for the upcoming fiscal year and beyond.
I will second that. Have a motion in a second to approve the budget director's. Budget range. All in favor signify by I.
I.
I. All opposed, may?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries two to one.
Okay. Thank you. I will work on that job description and get it back in front of you for more discussion. So I appreciate the discussion today.
Thank you Stella.
Thank you.
Anything further Stella or?
That's it for me, but the next item on our agenda and really the bulk of today's work. And is really the compensation board and then just general wage discussions. So I did put into your packet.
Kevin, can you turn volume up? I think you might have turned it down maybe.
I will speak louder. I'm just pulling up a couple of different pieces of information and then I will share them regarding the compensation board and their recommendations. For FY twenty three of the elected officials. So this document I prepared before, so it should look familiar, but the area highlighted in yellow. Would be the current, I'm sorry, there's a, there's a mistake on there. It should be the FY twenty two salaries of the elected officials. And their recommended increases from the compensation board. So you can see, and we've, we've talked a little bit about the recommendations were the auditor nine percent. County attorney, recorder and treasurer, ten percent. The sheriff fifteen percent and then the supervisor's six percent. So if you were to make those changes, the new recommended salary would be that area that's highlighted in yellow. And then. The board can roll back any of those items in equal percentages. So I've just. For discussion purposes, rolled them back in five percent increments. You can make any, you know. You could do four and a half, you could do any number within there, but these are just for display purposes. So you can see each box shows. The first one say a five percent rollback would equate to what salary? So that is for discussion and Dawn, do we have any members of the compensation board present that would like to say anything?
We do. Well, we do have vice chair, Ken Rundy here, and I do not see anyone online at this time, but the vice chair for the compensation board is present.
And maybe if, while Ken speaks still, I would like to know from you, the raise that you just got from the board of supervisors, I'd like to have you break that down for percentage. For current and then you'll get a raise in July, whatever the, the bump is from, for everybody. And then your steps. I'd like to see what that progression looks like for percentage increases. And I, I'd like that today so we can use that as part of our discussion, which what we've just, you know, I think that's the first raise we've given. So I'd like to use that for reference.
Sure. I will work on that. I don't know if you have anything you would like to say or you're just, okay.
Stella, can I get that printed out? I can't find it.
Yes, I will print it for you right now.
No, you don't. She did plant all those flowers, so.
Every year you just like take us to task, man. You, you're too good.
Yeah, right. No, I didn't want to pass up an opportunity to have a few words to say about this. So. Anyway, I. Had made contact with the State Sheriff's Association and they have, they have. All the counties that submitted what their comp boards recommended, and then they also have what the board supervisors have approved throughout the county. And I stand behind the fifteen percent for the sheriff. And I recommend, you know, that you consider passing the recommendations of our board just as they are. I'm going to read, if you don't mind, I'm going to read off what some of these board supervisors have already approved and.
You have the county names to give us as well?
I do, I will. I'm going to give each of the county names too.
Thank you, Ken.
Yep. And some of these counties are small counties, but some of them are in, they butt up to Lynn and Joan, Johnson County, Jones County. Washington County. So they're all. You know, representative or I feel they're comparable to what Joe's going through and the fact that some of these counties. Well, I'll tell you which counties they are. They, the populations are like twenty thousand, but they're butted up against other metropolitan counties, larger counties. And their board supervisors are biting a bullet and taking care of their people. And I think, I think we seriously need to consider doing that. So. Lee County, the board supervisors approved a forty five percent raise for the sheriff. In Crawford County, the board supervisors approved a twenty percent raise. In Appinose County, the board supervisors approved ten percent. In Davis County, the board supervisors approved four point five percent. Chickasaw County, the board, they gave a cash recommendation of fifteen thousand. And, but they only approved forty five hundred increase.
Which county was that, Ken? Sorry.
That was Chickasaw. And then Butler County gave a five point two five percent. Tama County, the board supervisors gave a fifteen percent approval. Washington County, which is one of the counties I was speaking about, has a population of about twenty to twenty two, but it's right on the. Avenue Saints, Avenue of the Saints, right below, just south of Iowa City, south of Johnson County. They got a thirty, they approved a thirty five percent raise for their sheriff. Hamilton County approved a ten point eight percent. Clay County approved a four percent. Blackhawk County, obviously they're very comparable to Dubuque. They approved a fifteen percent. Mahaska County approved eight percent. Plymouth County, again, they did a six percent and then a. Eight thousand dollar. Side payment. For the sheriff. Keyakuck County, they approved a twenty five percent for their sheriff. Saragordo County approved a seventeen point seven seven percent for the sheriff. When Abayow County approved a twenty nine point seven percent. This one here is another one Cedar County. Population of about twenty some thousand and they're, but they're between Lynn and Johnson. Their sheriff's getting a forty eight point seven two percent raise. Osceola County approved a six percent. Wapalo County approved a ten percent. Page County approved a nine percent. Van Buren County approved a twelve percent. Marshall County approved a five percent. Monroe County. They asked for six thousand dollar increase for the sheriff and they gave him a six thousand dollar increase. And Marion County was approved for seventeen percent. So some of the other ones, you know, Potawatomi County and some of them haven't, haven't, their boards haven't made a decision yet. So. So with that. Both Cedar County and Washington County are going to make. A lot more money than what our sheriff is going to make and I think that's totally unacceptable. I think we need to bite the bullet and we need to make the changes necessary to. Fulfill all the recommendations by our board. And right now for law enforcement, we, we are all working to recruit people to, to do these jobs. And. They respond to every call that the public calls to them, whether they're trained, enabled, being able to do it or not. They, they go to the scene, they take care of them, they do everything they need to do to keep people safe in this community. And we're having a hard time recruiting people to come do the job. We want them to come and do the job and love what they do. I was fortunate enough to do that for a long time and I think we need to take care of these people. You know, most of the other people that come to work here for the county don't have to put on a bulletproof vest and worry about going home at night. And I think it's important that we defend these people and stand up for them and we pay them what they're worth. And it's time to bite the bullet and take care of them and get them where they need to be. And if any of you want to talk to me about it privately, I'd be more than happy to do that. So. I think that's all I got to say. Anybody have any questions for me or?
I don't have anything. Thank you, Ken.
One, one question, I don't know if you can answer it or others, but you mentioned, you know, a whole dollar amount increase with some of the counties. And I assume they also have their comp board. And so do you know how that has worked? Could we, could we approve a comp board, something up here as a percentage? And then also have outside of that for either one or all the elected officials, another compensation increase? Is that, does anyone know if that's allowed?
Well, I would assume it's allowed because they do it here, but I'm going to, I'm going to tell you that if you. That doesn't, that doesn't take care of where we're going. So next year, when I come in here and, and fight for this again. Then it's going to be, it could be higher. So I, I think it's important that we do it the way the comp board has recommended to do it and. Get the people where they deserve to be. And, you know, I just think it's. It's time. It's time. I mean, you know, I know I, I took three freezes. And my staff took three freezes when I was the sheriff. And that's part of the reason where we're at today because we, and not, and it wasn't just the sheriff's office. They froze everybody. But that's why we are where we are today with every one of them elected officials. And so I think it's important that we do the right thing and get these people up where they belong. And then, then it won't be as big a fight every year. You know, we won't have to recommend the big numbers every year, but every year we recommend these numbers and we fight about it. I mean, I don't, I'm just saying we disagree about it. I mean, we're not saying we're fighting about it, but we're, you know, we disagree and. And if you look at some of the tax bases, tax bases in these other counties. They're a heck of a lot smaller than what Dubuque is and. You know, I'm not trying to pick a fight with this one, but. Dubuque County has hired a lot of civilian people over the last number of years since I left here in two thousand and ten. And we're paying them a significant amount of money that we're not willing to pay our elected officials. And I'll tell you what, that's out of line. These people are serving. At the request and the vote of the people. And they deserve to be treated as good as any public employee that you bring in here to work. And they deserve every bit of that, just like they do. How do you expect people to run for elected office? If you're not going to compensate them properly and then you bring private employees in here and you pay them. In abundance because you want them to be competitive with the rest of our community. You know, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul. And you're not doing the right thing across the board. You have to do the right things for the right reason. And treat these elected officials the way you want to treat the rest of the public employees here. So. So any other questions?
You know, like some of these other counties, how many people are tied to the sheriff? Other than a chief deputy, like by state code?
Nope, I don't. But that's another, that's an issue that you need to deal with, with their unions.
Right.
I mean, that's
There's any others that were structured like ours is?
Oh, I'm sure there are. You know, I'm sure there are, but I haven't done that research. So
I think that's where the biggest issue comes in, is the number of people tied to the sheriff. Getting the sheriff up and chief deputy and the captains up where they belong isn't an issue. The issue being, the sergeants are already second or third paid in the state. Kinda hard to swallow giving them a raise, that big of a raise, to get the sheriff up, and they're gonna be first in the state.
But that's, it's been like, it's been like that forever. I was the one who started the union for our management people. And the reason I did that, I'll refresh everybody's memory, because some of yous weren't here. But the board supervisors were gonna try and take the health insurance away from all of my management people. And I told them, I said, I don't think you want to do that. These people have worked their way up through the ranks all these years and dedicated their lives to Dubuque County. And now you want to take their healthcare away? Sure enough, they did.
I think it was the longevity, not the healthcare.
No, they, well, they were gonna cut the healthcare, too. They wanted you to pay more. And so I called the Teamsters and I said, we need to get this done and we need to do it now. And that's why we did that, and that's why we tied everybody to the sheriff's salary at that time, because we had to protect them.
Right.
And it was another injustice that I felt that, you know, just because they were gonna be tied to the sheriff, so they were gonna cut those other benefits, which was totally unfair. So that's why that was started the way it was. If they would've taken care of them like they should've and protected them, then we wouldn't have had to go that route. And so here we are today. So if they want to deal with those sergeants or whoever else under that bargaining unit, then they need to do it through bargaining. I'm here to support the elected officials, especially the sheriff. And I'm not gonna change my mind, so. So
I understand where you're coming from, and I know what you, I was there. I know what you went through.
Yep. So any other questions?
Nope, thank you.
All right, thank you.
You have anything, Ken?
No, I've, I've talked to Ken privately, and he and I have discussed. I don't know if Stella has any numbers yet for me.
If you don't mind, I'd like to say a few words.
Go ahead, Joe.
So I've been the sheriff for five years, and I think we can all agree that I've never once come to you and complained about my wage. I've taken whatever you've given. Even when the comp board has recommended higher numbers, I've always accepted what was given to me and been happy with it. But I come here today not just to argue it on the benefit of myself, but on the benefit of also my administrative team. My chief deputy, the captains, I, I understand, you know, as Harley said, our sergeants are compensated at a very high rate. But I don't think that it's fair to hold that against the chief deputy and the captains who are underpaid for their position because they're tied to my position. They have a significant amount of responsibility. They each run a division that makes life or death decisions every day. We want to make sure that we are compensating these people properly, so that they can, so that we can get qualified people in those positions and hopefully reduce the liability for the sheriff's office. You know, a lot of times, as Ken said, we, year in and year out, it's pretty much the same song and dance. The comp board makes a recommendation to get the, get the public officials up to where they are supposed to be according to population rank. Then the Telegraph Herald writes a big opinion article on it about how this is not fair. And yet, no one ever mentions the fact that the city of Dubuque has approximately twelve employees that make more than the county sheriff. Including the leisure services manager, the director of strategic partnerships, the economic development director, the airport director, amongst others. None of these people are in public position. None of these people have to use, every four years, use money out of their salary that they're paid, just so they can keep their job. It's not fair. It's not fair to be targeted as an elected official for asking for just compensation, compensation. And it's not fair that you have many other people in this community with less responsibility and they're getting paid more and have better compensation than you have. I know the argument's been made that, and it was made in the comp board meeting, that people are, in this county, aren't getting big raises this year. That's simply not true. I think it's well-known that John Deere employees just signed a, a five-year contract, received a ten percent wage increase this year and an eighty-five, eighty-five hundred dollar bonus. And over that five-year contract, their wage increase will be thirty percent. The salaried employees out of John Deere were given an eight percent wage increase. Most positions in the area in food service have all received wage increases. And here's a quote from, this is from the Telegraph Herald editorial board, January twenty-third, under the heading, "Our Opinion: Dubuque Economy Can Weather Worker Shortage." Two quotes in here. One says, "Three years ago, no one would have imagined fast food restaurants and small retailers offering starting wages of up to fifteen dollars per hour end up with stay bonuses and options for benefits, but that's what we're seeing in some cases." Two paragraphs down says, "As a society, we need to advocate for these positions that are vital to our workforce and cannot be replaced by artificial intelligence, jobs like certified nursing assistants, childcare workers and teachers, and law enforcement, although it's not in there. If their wages don't grow commensurate to increases in other industries, we will see a mass exodus in these critical fields." So, having that said, I would just like the board to take that into consideration and and approve the, the request as made by the compensation board. Because if it gets rolled back, everybody knows what's gonna happen next year. Obviously, if it gets rolled back, I will then be making less money than the sheriff of the twenty-seventh ranked county in the state. And so there's likely to be a, a significantly larger number than fifteen percent coming back next year. And everybody knows what that's gonna look like, when the, when the public sees that. They're gonna freak out like everybody does every year. And I think we're all tired of fighting this battle. So if you don't want to do it for me, if you think I suck or whatever, at least do it for my employees who go out every day, put their life on the line for the people in this community, answer the call every time somebody dials nine-one-one, we haven't turned anybody away yet. Please do it for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Kennedy.
I did invite other elected officials to come and speak. And I appreciate the sheriff. I appreciate that very much, because I think it's important to stand before voters, like I will, in the fall. And I think it's important for you to go to the podium and state what needs to be said. So I, I thank you for that. And I would ask Stella, if you have your own percentage of increases, if you could go to the podium and share that with us, what we just did.
So in this year, it would be a nine percent increase. And then steps across all of our scales are about five percent increases. So that is typical on all of the scales, wage scales out there.
And then in the fall, excuse me, for July first, there'll be another raise that you'll get also, correct?
If there's an adjustment, yes.
Right. So if we adjust every county wage, three percent or four percent or two percent, you'll have a nine percent increase then, plus another two or another three percent, right?
The scale adjusts typically, Dawn can correct me if I'm wrong, with the scales adjust on an annual basis with changes made by the board.
Yeah, yeah. Every, each step increases by the amount of general wage increase you approve.
So what was the wage increase for you and Stella last year, effective July first?
The three percent that was for all non-bargaining.
Three percent. So we're looking at a nine percent raise, we gave you today, starting July first. But if we increase everybody by three percent, you'll have a twelve percent increase, right?
Yes, I believe that's true.
I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the comp board recommendation as presented. No rollback.
I wanted more discussion, so I'm not, not ready.
All right. Can there be more discussion on it? Can we hold your motion?
Fine. I'll withdraw my motion at this time.
Yeah. Go ahead, Joe.
A couple of things from, you know, the last five, six years, really, in, depending on, since we got new HR director. You know, that position, she's been looking at comparable wages across a lot of departments. And that's wise. That's, you know, that's why she's in place. And so over the last four to five years, the supervisors has heard, have heard requests from a variety of departments. I wrote down the ones off the top of my head, from IT. I remember we did a conservation, we had a dollar increase in their wage. Sunny Crest, we made changes. Rhodes was just in here two weeks ago, talking about their mechanics and their shop form. All positional changes that they've asked the board to say, hey, we're trying to right-size this. And my experience is, most of those have been improved. I voted against, some of them, I voted for, most of them, was my, my general memory. So that has occurred. And then those individuals have also then been part of the annual wage increases as, as well. Right or wrong, that's just what has happened. So, so certainly related to the, the budget director, that, that seems to be what we've been reviewing and doing as a board of the last four or five years. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Related to the compensation board, it's, boy, it's just the wrong tool. Yes, the sheriff's department, if they do have to wear bulletproof vests, they are in harm's way. Not everyone on that list is, including the supervisors. So, but unfortunately, by state statute, we've gotta kind of mix all these together on percentages and rollbacks. I think it's just the wrong tool. So, so one, I, one, one easy item, and maybe it's already done. Are the deputies already at the max percentage related to the sheriff's salary? Is that, and then assuming those deputies follow that same rule? Related to separate contracts, okay.
Administrative deputies are, but the chief deputy and captains and sergeants are
The deputies are not. Only the administrative deputies, sergeants, captains, chief deputy, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, just the management. All right. Thank you for that. So, so the dilemma that we have with the percentages, and I'm looking at it, is that, one, they're, they're tied, they're associated. If we do a rollback, they're associated and they're not all the same in them. So there must have been some intent within the compensation board to get them aligned somehow. I have a document in front of me and believe, to be accurate, that shows fiscal year twenty-two salaries of the Dubuque County Sheriff that ranking number eight, our population is ranking number eight. I was still maybe too low, but maybe I'm not looking as right. I, and as I go across, look at, and maybe that's with the increase. So that, that could be a problem. But most of them are at that rank, here's what I'm looking at. If you look at line twenty-five, those fiscal year twenty-two salaries, is that with, that's current state play, right? That's not. And so you've got a ranking of, I believe, the, the sheriff would be eight. And if you keep moving over, you've got the attorney at eight, the coroner at nine, and so, and so forth. So that doesn't seem too out of line. Well, if I might add, Black Hawk County Board Supervisors already approved a fifteen percent raise for their sheriff. And Woodbury County is considering a thirty point, or thirty-one point two five percent raise for their sheriff.
And those numbers are
So I, I thought related to comparison, sometimes that's not a good one, is that we're, we're in, we're in the neighborhood. Related to, to other counties, if that, what I'm looking at is, is accurate. Other counties may be jumping ahead of us in fiscal year, but that's a, that's a tough one to juggle, related to in-year budget comparisons. Because we definitely probably make a decision next week, right after we make ours. So, so that's my first thought, is that we, going into this year, we're the eighth population and we're the eighth salary sheriff.
You got the chief of police in Dubuque, with his increase, he's gonna be making right about what sheriff or the police chief makes here.
Yeah, I'm, so, one of the first things I looked at was the salary ranges between the city and the county. And I think my first count, this was a long time ago, they had over forty people make around cost of costs, probably more than that. So the city, yeah, their salary structure's much higher, much more aggressive.
And, and we, we maintain the county jail, we take care of all their inmates. And our jurisdiction is in the city and the county, and they're solely in the city. So we're responsible for a hundred thousand people, they're responsible for sixty.
Yeah, my, my, so, so going back to it, my problem is with the compensation formula and tying all the elected officials together to some degree, that seems a bad tool. And then secondly, cascading that down to deputies seems to be awkward. And what I was giving examples with is where we've identified where we're, we believe through HR, management, elected officials, supervisors, that we're low in key areas in making those adjustments. As opposed to just accepting what has been very large historical percentage of increases compared to the prior sector. This year, they're all escalating up, I'll give you that.
But it has continually, continually been higher asked by the compensation board. Those cans continually been picked up and rolled.
Right.
It's never been corrected.
I'd like to challenge that, because what are they looking at? Number eight to eight, you know, and I'd love to, you know, I, I could never do your job, sheriff. I could never even do your, any of your correctional people's jobs. It's just, it's a very challenging position. But if you look at rankings, you know, we have had some, some catch-ups in some large areas. I guess I'm just looking at that, and I don't know how we're so far off.
I look at it, yeah, Dallas County, ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight, Dubuque County, ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-six, I'd say that's pretty close.
Oh, yeah.
Their sheriff is a hundred and thirty-eight thou, or a hundred and twenty-two. That's a big difference. Just my personal opinion.
No, I get it, I get it, but then red hot, it's Woodbury, Black Hawks, at low, so that's what the ranking, because it's a ranking.
They just got a three percent raise, too.
Yeah, Black Hawk, and Black Hawk got a fifteen percent raise.
We need to acknowledge that the wage the sheriff has right now is because of the six point five percent increase voted on last year by Supervisor Potoff and Supervisor McDonough. That has been routinely criticized, I think even as, maybe even this morning, as Supervisor Whitehead circled last minute, that it was too high. So where you are is because we've been attempting to increase your wages, recognizing that there's a necessity So where you are is because we've been attempting to increase your wages, recognizing that there's a necessity to catch up, as the word was. Now we're coming out into superinflation and wage inflation escalation that I can't find anybody to give me a marker for, or a way forward, or an expert opinion, okay? And two supervisors were in a closed session previously, where we discussed issues relating to wage negotiation in our union contracts. So there are other issues that two of us would also have advantage of not, about issues before the supervisor, excuse me, the sheriff's department. So there are other things to consider, the last thing that we haven't addressed at all is the back of the blue bill. Which the state legislature adopted, which requires supervisors to note, not just where you are in the rankings, but to note specifically where the sheriff is in relationship to like populations and like counties, right? And communities, and, uh, sheriff and I spoke about that before this meeting. That would put you, your opinion on par with Scott County.
Uh, Devonport Police Chief.
The Devonport Police Chief, and what is the wage of that gentleman, for that person?
Hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Hundred and fifty-three thousand, okay.
They have a population of a hundred and one thousand plus, we've got a population of ninety-nine thousand plus, they're the closest comparable.
And that's without any obligation to do anything in regard to the sheriff, to the jail, does that, so? We have workforce issues, we have retention issues, we have lack of anyone who wants to attend the academy, and years of compounding that's happening in, in our public service and in our public safety, and we do need to take action. So, we can go through charts and make minor points, and you look this way, that, but we do need to lead on this, or we're gonna have a further compaction of wages. And also, you're not gonna get the folks you need to do the job that we're, we are elected to help you get accomplished.
So, that's where I am, I think.
When we look at the wage increase and the clunkiness that there is with the compensation board, yep, it's awkward. But we gotta do something, and, and this board, in our budget session, is looking back now, we're in week three of this, we have said yes to everything from that podium, everything has been a yes, the conservation department, everybody's been yes, yes, yes. And now we're gonna sit here with our elected officials and say, well, maybe not, we're gonna tweak this, what, what's the right rollback number? Twenty percent, forty-five percent rollback? It impacts our employees, and we, I don't think we set the right tone by, as we say, compensating supervisor department folks, when we're not
Also looking at
the other es, the other departments in our county as well, so, you know, I'm, I stand behind
I would be glad to
to modify the recommended increase for supervisors, they put six percent in for supervisors just to have a marker for us, something to have with the rollback, so we will modify that ourselves. But I, I am comfortable, even in light of comments from supervisor Whitman, I am comfortable with the fifteen percent increase for the sheriff, and that brings everybody else along. And I'd ask Stella to put together what those numbers look like for the budget. It's not a year where anybody's got a better answer, you know, and John Geer's getting increases like that, I mean, it's we have to, I can lead on this wage issue.
I would agree with Ian. The back of the blue bill has definitely had a huge impact on the law enforcement, the sheriff, like kicking the hand down the road in the complex problem. It's been going on for years and years and years, and somebody picks up Ian, throws him in the air.
Maybe we can use it thoughtfully, also if other counties are doing whole-dollar raises, why can't we? So I'm not, I'm not a hard no, I'm looking for yeses. And so, but keep in mind, back to blue, does that mean the auditor, you should get nine percent, and county attorney ten percent, order ten percent? Supervisor six, and treasurer six?
Some, some of those counties that made the cash issues, instead of doing percentages, they obviously did cash payouts instead. To bring their salaries up, some of them did a percentage and then a cash payout besides, but I'm telling you, you, go ahead, if you, you know, consider doing something like that, and sure, the sheriff is gonna get a nice bonus, but that doesn't answer your question down the road, because every year, until that
One time, so it's a one time, it's a one time, that's different, and change, so nothing about a one-time compensation increase, I'm talking about a flat power mark. Not a percentage power mark, we're supposed to let the percentage raise to, raise to power, but just adding that in just certain areas. Not, not bringing everyone along. So I mean, that's where I could look back at, too, but that doesn't put the treasurer, for my position. But in this scenario of bill, they'll be getting
Well
largest raises they've ever received, over ten percent, which is probably still higher than private sector, remind me.
We, we picked the six percent as a base because that's what the cost of living was this year. And that's why the board supervisors ended up with a six percent raise.
So I, I think that's key, another piece I will make, and it sounds like there's consensus moving forward, so I won't belate this. I think you've got to look at our compensation for insurance, it is very good, and I'm very proud of that.
Absolutely.
But I think by, it's at least out-of-pocket cash, within forty-eight grand, depending on who you follow, and, you know, how much you've spent. And then if you have a medical issue, you know, our out-of-pocket max is what, how much?
Six hundred.
Six hundred, many policies are six thousand and up.
I agree.
So I mean, it's, it's a significant benefit that, that we provide, and we do that because we've, we've, we've helped the economy, and, uh, you know, our budget's a lot for those things. I, those aren't in any of these numbers, and, and you can ask our insurance providers, they say, sure, the city, Dubuque, we have the best plan of in-state Ohio. And so those are, those are, those are really key com, key components that, that I would look at as well, so.
I
I've been laggard on, you know, on the changes, but keep in mind, I hopefully you don't characterize me as zero. I mean, I, I, that's unconscionable, if zero percent wage increases, and I've never recommended that, and never done that in my entire life, professionally in government, so, the number I have is just not the highest number of percentages, it's, it's a rollback that I think is is, is more rationalized what we're, we're dealing with today. I know we disagree, but, uh, that's, that's, that's been my, I mean, it's one of the no-loads in the past for the compensation board.
But compared to the benefits, I have looked into that, as has Dawn, there's ISAC does that as well, our benefits are comparable.
Well, agreements.
To, to the counties. They are very comparable, and when our insurance provider stands here, it says that they're using a different standard, they're using a standard that is regional or national, when they say US average benefits. They're not using the Iowa county employee standard when they talk about the restrictions on our benefits. They're talking about their industry standards, so I think our benefits are fantastic. They are incredibly helpful to all of our employees, proud to be able to do that, but we do that because we have, we self-fund a good portion of it, and we have safe and healthy employees.
You had mentioned rollback, what was your thinking on the rollback?
Uh, lower than zero, or higher than zero.
Or less zero.
Higher than zero, sorry, so no changes, you know, there's, there's, uh, you know, you know, so, no changes, it's a, a fifteen percent highest level of sheriff and six percent of us supervisors. Um, I've in the past have been in that three to five percent range of the compensation, I could be convinced a little higher this year. But generally speaking, over my term, I've looked to have the public sector as far as percentage of increases be in line with what normally is provided, tends to be at three to five percent range. Tends to be trending up, this is the first year ever I saw the, you know, the supervisory index and others, inflation, annual social security is, is the highest they've ever been during my term. So I'd be open to, to modifying that, to a higher level, but, uh, I think where your, where my colleagues are, it's twice the amount where I'm at, as far as percentage increase.
I think we've as I said, take it down the road, and take it down the road, and we take it down the road next year, they're gonna be back, and it's gonna be the same thing, oh, forget it. You're never gonna be caught up, the best thing to do is, like some of these other counties are doing, is fight it and try to get where we need to be, that we can, next year, okay, may, there probably be another raise, I'm sure, but, uh, but the cost of living is five point nine, it's you're talking three to five, we're going back. Sorry for this, my thoughts.
Well, I think we should, I think we should also be discussing supervisor, I think we should also be discussing supervisor increase. Because that was placed, um, I think as a marker, saying that it was on the comp board, Ken, you were there, and I sat out in the hired seats to listen in. Um, that was there as just a general increase based on possible increase. So I think we do a separate discussion amongst ourselves about how we feel about six percent. I don't feel good about a six percent rate wage increase for us.
Would you carve that out, I remember stumbling on the seat here or two ago.
I don't think so.
Supervisors deserve the right to, at all, both.
So I was not even making a wish for your actors, supervisors. The next discussion that we bring down is general wage discussion. And I would like to talk about supervisor compensation, after we talk about everybody else's compensation, and see how we feel about general wage increase. Because I think we stay much more aligned with all of our other employees. The elected officials, I do think we need to get, we need to get this right, and we need to lead on this, and then hope that next year, we're not looking at these kinds of increases again.
And that our economy will settle a bit.
So we don't have wage compaction and superinflation.
Those are concerns that, I just don't, I don't have answers to this, and I've asked folks to help, and there's not, there is not expert opinion to help us on this this year.
So this provision says that you, in essence, you can carve out your own, you don't have to decrease it in, in system with the other elected officials, that you can do a different percentage to, uh, rollback than all the other officers. So that's what this, um, provision is taking, so you can carve your, your own out, instead of a lower or higher one.
There for others.
I would be willing to, uh, go with all my agrees, Michelle.
I think we should treat ourselves like other employees.
I do think there should be an increase for supervisors, we are experiencing the same impacts everybody else is, and I don't think there's anything wrong with saying that that's important for yourself, and whoever's gonna
run with us, with me, this spring, this fall, into the election, November, so.
That's, that's fair, that's what you do for employees and
we have to decide on wage increase.
I, I don't support the six percent. Probably at the three to five. My normal answer for that, if there are any that's interested in bringing that lower, support that past. I, I, a couple years ago, I swear, we tried to change last two budgets ago, and, you know, we're a little good at, um, it's overrated, so we can't modify it.
I mean, I don't
I don't know what you're, what we're trying to accomplish, you know, if it's just an incentive, if it's a goodwill gesture, gesture, that, you know, we can take zero or lower, that's fine, I think it's just out of goodwill gesture, um, whole-dollar on, doesn't affect the county or probably anyone else personally. Um, if you're trying to honor the comp board, then it literally doesn't do that. So I, I've been hearing from colleagues who want to honor the comp board, getting rid of these problems we have. Um, so if that's the case, you just, just accept their thing, I, I'll be, I'll, I'll be, you know, I'm a hundred percent of the comp board, comp board's recommendation, I'll be looking for those rollbacks to, in order to, yeah, so, I feel okay to go without me.
So I would have a sentence, we're gonna have a general wage discussion, starting soon here, and that's just for us, and with all the other general wage. We should be rolling where we're along, whatever else is being done for employees.
That's where I am.
So doesn't that, why doesn't, when you want to just kind of get this off, I'm worried about the general wage, and we're we're outraged on this.
Right, because it doesn't have, doesn't have to have the same action at the same time.
And I'd like to have the whole wage discussion, because I would like to treat us like all the other employees, I don't want to treat us zero.
I don't think that's fair, but I also don't think that we should be at six percent, that was just the marker.
That was the comp board's recommendation, and it was probably unanimous. That's, uh, the comp board is unanimous, so however you're speaking at the comp board, is kind of, you know.
You're making a motion, you'd like to press it there.
I'm just feeling some kind of logic, and the comp board, you know, I can see following logic of the comp board, but oh, not in this one area. And that's the dilemma with the comp board, is you can't sheriff hits a percentage from his program, or auditor, county attorney, recorder, treasurer. I still think you're supporting the comp board's recommendations.
Are you ready for your motion at this time?
I am, I'm done with this.
I'll make a motion to support the comp, comp board recommendation for fiscal year twenty-three for the elected officials of the auditor, county attorney, recorder, sheriff, the treasurer.
I will second that. Have a motion, a second to approve the comp board recommendations for the auditor, county attorney, recorder, recorder, sheriff, and treasurer. All in favor, say five aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, name?
Name.
Here is two to one.
Ken, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you guys.
Sure, please.
Thank you, Ian.
Sheriff, can we, uh, have a session?
Sure.
So, Luke?
Have a motion, and a second, reset, and now, all in favor, say five aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
We're in recess. Call the board of supervisors back in the session. Next on the agenda today, we have a general wage discussion. Don handling that or Stella?
Yes. Yeah. My mic gone. So the next thing on the agenda is just general wage discussion. So let me pop this spreadsheet back on. So the things that would be up for discussion really is the non bargaining wages at this point. So of our union contracts, there is only one that is open at this moment.
There are two, yeah.
That's all I think.
So there's one union contract open, so all the unions are already negotiated for this year. Aside from one, the sheriff's deputies. And then non bargaining would be the other piece of the discussion. So I'm not suggesting we do union negotiations here, but the, the non bargaining piece is what the conversation needs to be next.
All right, so that's three percent.
I've just put, so when I prepared this spreadsheet, it's got all of our employees downloaded into it. When I prepared it, I put in the comp board recommendation just as it was presented. And then I just put in three percent for non bargaining. That's what it was last year. So those are just, it's a formula as you discuss and change things. I can manipulate the spreadsheet.
Obviously, we know that the cost of living is higher than that.
What's M H D S? What's, why is that there?
Oh, those are departmental totals. So each one of these green lines represents an apartment as I was preparing this and they all total down to this countywide number at the bottom.
So the only number we're, we're using right now, the only variable is for non bargaining employees.
Correct.
Look at three percent across the board.
So that's what's in there right now. And that would equate to, well, let's see, if I.
How many non bargaining employees are there?
There's approximately ninety six this one.
Ninety six, did you say?
Ninety six.
So the total right now at three percent is a hundred and three thousand dollar increase to our wages. Because everything else in there has already been settled.
So give me the increases that are happening in the union contracts that are deciding.
That are decided. So Rhodes, Sunny Crest in the courthouse will obviously three percent increase. The administrative deputies at the sheriff's department will receive a fifteen percent increase as soon as your cap board.
As they go beyond the official.
Correct. There's, all their salaries are tied to the sheriff's salary and that's the increase.
So under all the union contracts, everyone's gonna get three percent increase this year. Is that correct?
All, the only one we have opened is deputy sheriffs. And so that one we're still in the midst of beginning negotiations with that. So that one does not go into Germany. But yes, you are correct with the other party.
So why wouldn't we do three percent for everybody? I would invite the other.
I just have a question. We're listed departments. The auditor's office just have two non marketing employees. Actually, the auditor's office and then G I S, auditor's office has one and G I S has one. And I just don't know where they fall in this.
They're all in here.
Okay.
They're all. It's collapsed right now.
And I guess I would, if I may, Sheriff. Some of the people who fall into this non marketing unit are the, the cogs on the wheel, the most important in our office. Of the two people that we have in our office, they're both part of the non marketing section. We're talking about two people that county government would come screeching to a halt. Should we no longer have any availability of them? And similar to an earlier discussion about being able to, if they were to move on, we were unable to obtain that in order to track that talent. We're talking about specific people with very specific backgrounds and knowledge to be able to do this job. And our finance and tax manager and G I S are both those people. These are positions that you can't just find C P A off the street and throw it that into that desk and say, have at it. These are people with very specific governmental, county knowledge. And then up in G I S is very specific knowledge to how our county is laid out, tools that are used. A high level of community education required.
To then improve it on her.
Well, you know, to be brutally honest, I learned something today during the meeting is that that's, I think, what we have to do. Because if this is just going to be the three percent cost of living increase across the board, then I will simply present the differences between what my staff members are doing now versus what they were hired to do. That's fantastic. I didn't, I just know that was a thing. So I'm thankful for learning that bit of it today. But I would remind the board that C P I was at six point nine and I think projected the world was seven percent for cost of living and social security increases, I think, were at five point eight this year. And so this is often the group of people that I feel doesn't have a voice, you know, the elected officials have the comp board. The collective bargaining units have their organizations coming, they have their negotiations. And then after we do all the comp work and have all the, have all the rigorous debates, we just throw three percent and all the rest of the people sort of hanging out in the corridors. And I don't know if that should be the case. So I made my piece and I'll leave my opinion there. Thank you.
Everyone's really good at presenting stuff. I think three percent's a low. Since the lines you look at, elected officials are too high and other ones are too low. So that'd be my main point.
I would agree to three percent is too low, I would think. They have to look at the four to five percent.
There are employee, there are people in this county that are not making great shift rates. Right. So just so we know that, that's not like that's unheard of. That is happening. And I think education is getting, I don't know what they're, already getting a two and a half percent increase from the state. So we're, we're not it isn't all the same and it's unfortunate, but that's what we deal with when we get to this discussion every year. What to do about this. I've never been at a zero. I've never been at a small. I've always tried to be fair. So if three percent is too low, I just use that as an initial opening. There's three percent. That's what the number looks like. Certainly isn't going to impact our budget overall. A three percent increase is not a deal breaker for the county, correct?
Correct.
Right. So then let's roll up one. What's floor look like? Is that where my colleagues are? You want to go four percent?
I, that's right. I would be a little closer to fair, Jay. Do you look higher, but you look?
They look in comparison, a lot lower. Last wage increases we just gave the comp board. The elected officials. But this is a great point, previous point about fifteen minutes ago, yeah, private sector's not getting fifteen, ten, nine percent rate wage increases. They're about a closer to a less than eight percent. And about a million of them are six. I hope I'm married to one of those people that's in the private sector. My three to five stands, so that's kind of my range. My three to five percent has been my guideline. So forward, that stands.
What's the one percent? Thirty thousand.
So every one percent is about thirty four and a half thousand.
Would you be comfortable with four aye or what? What's your thoughts? I think three is too low. Or cost of living is actually a little higher than that yet. I think that's being fair.
Think that there are individuals certainly to the owner's point in your department with change in personnel. Key personnel. There's a lot of re job re line up.
And I would, I would encourage you to bring forward those as job description changes.
If that's what they warrant, that's what I think the mechanics are gonna do, right? Isn't that what Rhodes is gonna do? When we're really off the mark and the overall increase doesn't
correct that, then I think we need to hear about those people individually.
That's, I guess that's the way we do it. That creates bad precedent as well.
So are you thinking higher than four aye or what? Or, because I'm not sure where you're at.
I'm not sure where I am. I mean, I'd like to see us get, you know, what I asked before.
Let's get to John Deere specific. Let's get some industry standard. Let's find out whether, I you know, we're, I don't have, there's, there is no
known number at this time. We are, no one has experience in this kind of economy that I've been able to find, right? So you go back and you ask folks, they're already retired. You say, you know, inflation is so high. What did that do to your wages back in the nineteen eighties? No, they, they never got a raise because there was inflation. Right? It was just, it was not, and now everybody, it's not just inflation. It's the great resignation and it's summer or shortage. You know, so we're just trying to be fair. That's what we're trying to do. Is recognize that these folks are, you know, cost of living increased, which is a national number, it's a price index. But I mean, I don't have I'm looking at my budget director. What do you got? What do, what are people doing? Work it out. What do we have?
While you're thinking of that or going. Do we have, oh, yeah, we have nutrition rate. Do we have, oh, yeah, we have a nutrition rate. When people, full-time employees, the outside of Sunny Crest tend to have a lot of part-time attrition there. Is our attrition and retirement rate first, resignation rate, pretty close?
I would say carving out Sunny Crest, yeah, we're seeing more retirements.
Sure.
Qualified high-person retirements than somebody owe each other back, so we'd have to break them down in our system.
Well, moving around inside.
Sunny Crest would be.
Here.
It tends to be, it appears that, you know, we can retain employees and done that. My turn, and that would tell me the compensation, overall health benefits on the benefits and work environment is good. Hopefully the public sees that there's value there. And that tends to be what government gets, it's supposed to be said yet. When I work for software companies, we got those rates, ten to fifteen percent, that's your super hybrid growth rate. So I tend to be a little more, you know, a little rogue as a compensation.
I don't know that I have a good answer for you Supervisor McDonough on where we go here. I mean, you've, you've hit the nail on the head where we're in inflation and great resignation and so many things happening simultaneously. It is hard to see exactly the clear path.
Can we reach out to somebody to find out what's happening in the community? What's the city doing?
We can certainly reach out and ask.
The cities, so they'd be a mirror of us, they have elected officials, they're the union, and then they have their professional landmark. The union, the done contracts, we kind of hear a lot of theirs, ask them, is that right, we've been close?
Yeah, in the last couple of years, they, they made some adjustments at the beginning of COVID, they lowered some and then they lowered them a little bit and then had multiple year views for increases increased with you. So I'd have to go back and look at each one and those initially.
Should we chat to Dyersville?
Reach out to Dyersville.
Find out what they did.
I think Dyersville just gave their guys a big raise.
Which guys, law enforcement, they're chasing each other all over upstairs. Cause they keep legalizing Dyersville, but a part of it, and that's, and that's, that's one of the things we're trying to avoid in our own public safety area. But.
I think, you know, at fourth, I'd like to see whatever, those cities are showing raises too, nobody has an answer. But I mean, we have consensus, three percent's too low, so for all those folks listening, certainly isn't gonna be that. But I, I don't know, I mean, I'm. We better get some help.
I, I don't need help, I, I think it's related to those other governments, they aren't comparable. And so, you know, I was making a point about number eight ranking, number eight, we had that data, that that didn't seem to move anyone. So, you know, my experience is, you know, you have to take a number and have to be comfortable with that as a licensed official. But I think asking around the smaller government entities that are not very similar to us won't give you a lot of help, or in the private sector, John Deere's for-profit, they, they probably have hundred billion dollar cash on hand, you know, they're, they're much, much different than us as well. So I, I don't know what know what information you're gonna seek short of if you can get the non-marketing percentages from other counties like our size. That could be embarrassing, I'd be interested in that. But it just seems the process is kind of, you're looking from the outside in, you're like, wow. These guys get this big one and then you're getting them all around and tying over a percent from the worker bees in the world, so to speak. Seems odd. But that all said, I'm fine with four percent.
I'm fine with that.
What is the number?
Four percent, you fine with that or?
I don't know what I'm gonna base that on.
And I can't use private industry, I can't use government, can't use smaller governments, can't use bigger government. I mean, I don't know where I'm picking a four percent from.
I think we've been pretty consistent in giving raises to everyone that's been in that outside of the sheriff's comp board. I think it's all been pretty steady rate. Three to five, whether it's moved somebody up a step to sixty-five, seventy, or treasurer's office moving that clerk up. It's all within three to five percent range, so I would, I would think this is pretty fair.
So you want to sell use four just to mark up the budget, so we got a number to start with? Doesn't, I mean, it doesn't seem very professional.
So I mean, I'm asking the budget director for some guidance or some ways you might help us form an opinion.
I mean, certainly we can put a number in the budget if you want to do more discussion prior. So none of these would go into effect until July first. So we budget, but we pass all of this by resolution prior to the implementation of the budget. So we can certainly have more discussion. It would be much harder to go upwards. Maybe not in this category because it's only thirty-five thousand dollars per one percent. If you wanted to make like sweeping changes, it would be much more difficult if we don't budget it upfront. But that being said, we can budget a number and then continue discussions, certainly. And get, try to find some more information from other county governments to see where they have been with their non-bargaining this year.
Okay, we could do that, just pause it for now, do we get some more information from?
I would like to see the actual insurance. So I'd actually actually see the insurance comparison with that as well. Every time I've looked, they've been a lot higher in their region and a lot at substantially higher.
You're talking about the non-marketing?
I'm like, yeah, and obviously insurance from our part have, it would probably be across the board, insurance probably universal. If we're, if we're building on science, I'll get another one.
So do I have consensus from the board to budget four percent?
I can't hear you.
Do I have consensus from the board to budget four percent for non-bargaining?
I'm just using it as a marker. We need a placeholder, I'm using it just as a placeholder.
Doesn't have to be, you make a decision, we just make a decision, elected officials, but it's a whole decision that's fine.
Uh, sorry, second part of the question, I know there was discussion earlier about Board of Supervisors. Did that motion earlier include the Board of Supervisors? It did not, okay, so that would be also part of the discussion as well right now.
Going back to the non-marketing, it's just used the four percent as a place marker now, do we get some more information back?
I mean, I'm comfortable with four also.
Just see what, where the other, how many other entities are out there. Here, Board of Supervisors.
Who's four?
What are your thoughts on Board of Supervisors, and you said four, three, five, or whatever?
I don't know the intent of carving this out from elected officials. Thought we were on the ring comp board, we're obviously ten, but and it didn't seem like it.
Supervisor, if you're gonna put a placeholder in, and for this purpose service announcement, I might as well say, you should go six, because you can always go down there, but that would need to be a separate motion from your discussion about supervisors' percentage. So if you do want to put a placeholder in the budget, it's still gonna use, you want to make a motion. For a non-marketing.
So the elected officials are called out separately in our budget forms. So whatever we certify in our budget form will be the number. So when we prepare our budget forms, coming up here in the, the next couple of weeks, for elected officials, that will be the number, whatever you put in there. So there's not rolling that back later.
I guess where you at, Anna, the supervisor's saying?
I'm, I'm asking us to use four percent for us as well. When we need to make a motion to do that, we'll do that.
If we need a motion.
So Thursday will be kind of our final day of these discussions. So we'll kind of, we'll look at any loose ends, I'll call them, that have not had decisions yet. And we'll need decisions and work on levy setting on Thursday. So that's really the final day to make changes because we have to start our publication process. And we will meet Thursday and then we'll meet the following Friday to review everything in totality and start the publications through the papers, because we have a series of those for two different budget hearings. So certainly we can talk about it again on Thursday, but I would ask that all decisions be made on Thursday.
Use if you want to make a motion on it or just wait till Thursday and then?
The information we asked you gather from other counties. And we already have all supervisor data from all the counties, and that spreadsheet, so would be any new information?
None of supervisors though.
Where's the supervisor data?
It was in the comp board packet, that was in the ISAC salary survey.
That you're referring to?
Variety spreadsheets, I've seen of them one. One that was just up there a few minutes ago.
That's for this fiscal year.
Yeah, and if you're looking to, you know, sort of looking for outside counties, you know, so if you're looking at other non-marketing percentages of the counties, that could be helpful as well.
What's interesting on the elected officials is I appreciate that you put the board members on the far side. The numbers of supervisors that exist, because when Story County is, has three supervisors total, each of their supervisors are paid eighty-three thousand dollars a year. Dallas County has three supervisors and each of their supervisors are paying sixteen, nearly sixty-two thousand dollars a year. And then, of course, the others that have three supervisors, Lynn County, I mean, that's extraordinarily high, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. When you look at counties that have five supervisors, those are, those are the counties that pay supervisors less than us because there are five people doing the work. So, you know, people always say, oh, the supervisors are paid so much more. Well, we're not paid more than they're paid for three supervisors in Story or more than they're paid in, in Dallas, right? Because there's just three people doing the work. And that's fine, I mean, this is an enjoyable job and I would encourage people to, to do this, it's rewarding work. So I'm not sure what this is supposed to, you know, tell me in terms of supervisor information. This is the, this is the ISAC, elected officials from ISAC, July one to June thirtieth.
Make a motion that Board of Supervisors have an increase of four percent for December twenty-three.
More discussion or?
I think we just, yeah.
I'm not gonna second that this time.
I know we requested. The trail we're on is we request the staff to find some more information on non-marketing. And so the path is that information can help us superlative decisions, maybe, maybe with a motion is not. So we have all the information we need, so we can make a decision. I don't know if I got a final confirmation on that, because the information you're getting us that, you know, you delayed on making a decision on bargaining, will that help us make the supervisors' decision?
Is this the information you said you put together?
That was what was presented at the compensation, that's what they would do.
But I understood, I thought this was the information you put together for us to consider supervisors.
Well, it's part of it, I thought it was helpful, but it was prepared for the compensation board to swap.
Generally speaking, the compensation board of all elected officials, including us, that's by the math, they chose a percentage and, or agreed on all percentages to that one.
They chose the six percent because that was cost of living increase, is what Ken said. That's how much cost of living was six percent.
So what I have projected on the screen, I don't know if that's any more helpful, but the recommendations from every comp board in counties sized one through ten is that top green chart, so.
Whatever county is suggesting that supervisors are getting twenty-two percent increase. I mean, we, we can use this, but generally, I don't think we should be giving ourselves a bigger raise than we're willing to give to our own staff, so six percent is, in my opinion, not right. We're using four percent as a placeholder, so four percent for supervisors, to me seems like it's a number.
I, uh, voice was in earlier. I was at zero, I was above that. That was just me, so.
I was using the wrong thing, I apologize.
I am fine with zero as well.
I'm fine with, I didn't do this. Made a lot of money. Obviously.
If you break down the hours, you put it in for what you paid for it, it's a lot of shit.
I just think it's fair.
Own three, five rallies. So I'm, I'm at zero, and I think we've done that one other year, somebody recommended, and I was like, sure.
Given the large raises that we've had, we're basically forced to put out. I would be at the zero and be willing to make the motion that supervisors be at zero.
Second half.
A discussion, I would say, that there is absolutely nothing wrong advocating for an increase for the position that you hope other people will aspire to have.
It isn't a comment on my family budget or a reflection on leadership, but you can't stand still. That's how all of the elected officials ended up where we were.
We are ranked at number six. We're sitting fine.
We're behind the other counties that have three supervisors. So just note that as well, but I mean, literally, I just don't want us to be sacrificing ourselves.
Because we gave the sheriff a large wage increase. Each of these things should be considered independently and have their own merit. That's where I am.
I agree. Well, hardly, unfortunately, it's elected officials, that's not how we guess.
Like you said, I believe we're at six, then we're at eight.
Number six, I would.
We're ranked eighth, so I mean, I understand your point, someone has five supervisors, yada, yada, eight, three. And that was the topic that has been brought up to me as citizens going to fight person more. And that was the topic that had been brought up to me as citizens going to fight person for.
We should think about that. Like, when you look at how much the counties are spending on your supervisor budget, like.
People get a bargain.
For the alleged part-time hours, I would say. So we have a motion in a second for no, no raise for the supervisors on the favor, second by I.
I.
I. All of those. Nay, that'll carry. Nothing for the supervisors. Stella.
I have that recorded in the budget and then we will look for some more information to bring back to you on Thursday on non-bargaining unless there's more discussion.
Yeah, just see if you can get some information from the outside agencies. See where we're at. Is there any other? Any comments, Jay, or?
I think we're done, aren't we?
Ian, you have anything? No, anything further?
Sorry, my mic was off. That's it for me today. And we will be, sorry, excuse me, be back on Thursday at one o'clock. Wrapping up all of our loose ends, I'll call them, and looking at levy setting.
Okay.
You are also. In the budget. I would like to have some kind of a list of things that we're budgeting that could also be funded by ARPA.
Okay.
So we just start to kind of look at that.
Auditor Drago, do you have anything?
I don't. Long day and we have more extracurriculars this evening. So that's your pleasure.
Don, do you have anything? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Gary, so we are adjourned. We'll be back Thursday at one o'clock.